Phones are working. They're all on. They should be.
Thank you.
You just gotta walk into it.
Thanks, Di. Okay, well, set? Okay. Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the October 27, 2022 Board of Selectmen meeting being held today in the Cone Room and also via Zoom. And as always, we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have six minutes, sets of minutes, to approve. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of August 25, 2022?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, I second.
All those in favor? Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, yes.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of September 8, 2022?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, I second.
All those in favor? Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, yes.
Continuing on September 8 for the special meeting, is there a motion to approve the minutes for that on September 8?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, I second.
All those in favor? Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, yes.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of September 29, 2022?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, I second.
All those in favor? Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, yes.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of September 29, 2022?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, I second.
All those in favor? Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, yes.
And finally, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of October 13, 2022?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, I second.
All those in favor? Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. For, I'll start off with the updates. First, I want to congratulate our own Barbara Schellenberg for being chosen as one of the top 25 female lawyers in the state by Connecticut Super Lawyers. We already knew she was a super lawyer, but now it's, I guess, confirmed. But thank you very much for all you do. That's a great honor, and you certainly are, make us all very proud. So, thank you, Barbara. Tonight is the annual Dave Tice Award, being put on by the Glenville Volunteer Fire Department Company, and it'll be held at Tamarack. Hope to see you all there. Tonight, the honorary, the honorary will be given to Dan Wazoa, posthumously our former and first emergency operations director. Danny was a great guy who passed away in 2021. So, it's always a good night, and certainly past award winners will be there, recipients. And for those of us who knew Dave Tice, this is a fitting award tonight to, for Danny. As they both knew each other and liked each other, kind of similar, right? They're townies and love talking sports and love the town. And so, it's, I think it's very, very fitting. So, we'll look forward to that tonight. This weekend, Howl &amp; Prowl will be going on in Greenwich Avenue. It's always fun. We'll be doing some judging near contests. So, if you can show up without your dog or with your dog, preferably with your dog, but it's always fun to, to be there at that and see not only the dogs dressed up, but see how their owners react to them and other dogs there. Pathways will do their 40th anniversary event this Saturday night. So, that, I think that starts around 6 o'clock, I believe. So, if you haven't gotten tickets to that, I think they're still available. November 3, at 6:30, the Greenwich Botanical Center will be honoring the Bridge family, Sammy and company, a great Greenwich family. And it won't be at the Sam Bridge Nursery. It'll be at the Botanical Center. So, if you can make it, that's great. And then at 7 o'clock, I'll have to scoot over to the Greenwich Historical Society. They're doing the storytelling in the barn again. And if you haven't been to that, that's really, really fun. I participated, maybe like seven or eight years ago, when I told a story about growing up in Koskow on a little farm, which was on a postage stamp in back of Koskow School. We had goats, ducks, chickens, rabbits, two alligators, tons of dogs, you name it. So, we, they wanted me to tell that story, so I did. And they asked me to tell another story, you know, to try and tie it with Greenwich was back then, and how it's changed and what's going on the past few years. And there'll be four other people there, so you don't have to worry about someone going on and on and on. It's, it's fun, and it's, I'm kind of more interested in listening to the other ones than hearing myself speak. But it should be, it should be a fun night. We are going to be honoring Assistant Fire Chief, or Fireman Tommy Zach on the, where did I put this? November 4. Okay, same thing, 11 o'clock at the fire department. Makes me feel a little like Coach Tommy Zach in baseball back mid to late 80s. So, it's great to see him have a great career, and I don't think he's done yet, but certainly his career with the fire department has come into it, and we want to thank Tommy for all he's done. Saturday, November 5, we have the Todd's Point Cleanup from 9:30 to 12. So, if you're not doing anything, grab some gloves and come down there and help us weed and clear out some brush. And the 6th, Sunday, we're going to be celebrating Lisa Grace LaRusso's 60th, if that name sounds familiar. In Pemberwick, we just celebrated her mom's 101st, her aunt's 110th, and her other aunt's 98th. So, it's a, they have good genes in that family. So, we're going to be celebrating Grace at Lisa's. On Wednesday, November 9, we're going to do the gems ribbon cutting up on King Street. That's finally, after, I think, seven years, that's going to come to fruition. So, we're very, very happy about that. And then finally, with my, I'll leave off with, I want to thank Barbara Hines. This is her last meeting after six and a half years, who's been here through pre-COVID, COVID, post-COVID, you name it. She probably could write a book. She sees-
I will write a book.
I better be nice.
Totally fiction.
At least change the names. But she sees all the calls that come in and the emails, and we, everything, and Angie too, with, everything is transcribed exactly as it is. So, you know, I save mine in a file, as you know, and just to laugh when things are boring or I'm down and I need a laugh and see some crazy stuff. But she's been terrific. I certainly couldn't have done it without her. The Board of Selectmen certainly couldn't have done it without her. And she combines a lot of different skillsets, which have been really, really helpful, helpful to, I know, to me. And I can't thank you enough, but I'm also excited you're, you're getting to retire and do some other things that you like to do, and maybe visit the Cape a little bit more?
Yes. Yes, indeed.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Thanks again. Okay, and I'll look over to my right. Good morning, Lauren.
Good morning, everyone. Thanks, Fred. And congratulations to Barbara on your recognition, and thank you to Barbara, it's Barbara Day, I guess, for all of your service to the town. Really appreciate it. And, you know, helping escort, you know, we had three new members come in at the same time, and you escorted us through that opportunity to get to know what it was like to be the Board of Selectmen Woman People. I'll keep my, my remarks brief. Spent a lot of time this week interviewing architects for the Central Middle School Building Committee, about eight hours, to be exact. Also wanted to announce that we will have some opportunities to join the Historic District Commission. We're looking for two alternate members. So, if anyone in the audience or in the community is interested in serving on that very important commission, you just go to the town website. There's a section called "How Do I Volunteer?", and the forms to submit are on that particular link. Speaking of the Historic District Commission, we did get an email from one of the members that we nominated and appointed last year. I guess November 3, Thursday, is a busy night. He will be at Greenwich Library, and he is an author, and he's going to be talking about his book entitled "An American Renaissance Boat Art Architecture in New York City." So, if you're interested in it, just go to Greenwich Library, and you can sign up for the event. It's interesting because there's going to be some similarities. We've got some projects coming up on Greenwich Avenue, 125 Greenwich Avenue, to be exact. So, some of this information might shape how that unfolds, and that's my update.
Thank you. There's a lot going on on the 3rd. Good morning, Janet.
Good morning. Thank you. And I echo congratulations to Barbara, and much appreciation to this Barbara next to me. We're going to miss you. So, last week, on, at Thursday's Town Hall Health Fair, I learned that October is Fire Safety Month, and that our wonderful Greenwich Fire Department visited all 11 elementary schools. So, every opportunity I have to thank our, our fire department, I do. Tonight, for those of us not attending the David Tice Awards, WestCog is hosting an information session regarding FEMA's Flood Assistance Program. This meeting is in Stanford at 6:30. But for those of us who can't attend, there is going to be a recording of this session, and it will be posted on www.westcog.org. And then this Saturday, there's a lot going on this weekend. Greenwich Moms and Greenwich Magazine is hosting a greet and treat on Greenwich Avenue from 11 to 3 o'clock, and it looks like there's going to be very nice weather for that. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Lots going on. Good time of year. We're getting good weather for it, so which is great. Old business, there is none. So, go right to new business, and the road closure request for Arch Street to Greenwich Avenue on December 18, 2022, for the menorah lighting. And is anybody from Habad here?
Shira Fisher is on the meeting, but she's refusing to join the meeting. I tried to make her panel since she refused the request.
Oh.
I can try again and see if she will join.
Yeah, otherwise, we'll have to circle back with them next time.
Shira, if you do not join the meeting to help explain your presentation and request, the board will delay a vote until its next meeting, which is November the 10.
I'm going to allow her to talk, because if she won't join-
Yes. She, it looks like she has joined now, so we can allow her to speak.
Now, here's the problem. I just realized because of how this has been Jerry right this morning. I don't know that what she says is going to be audible in this room.
But you can hear it?
Somebody probably don't have the, you know-
Could you hear what she's saying?
Do you want me to-
I actually have to say, I can't hear what's being said on Zoom.
Shira, can you unmute yourself, please?
Barbara will be able to use it. Oh, I can hear her on Zoom.
Okay.
Yes, we can hear you on Zoom, but we're trying to connect your audio with the room.
Do you want me to play that on my laptop?
Yes, somebody needs to turn on their sound so that we can hear it. We apologize. There were some technical difficulties this morning. So, give it one second. Lauren's going to give-
And then hold your mic maybe to-
Yeah, put your mic down to the, it might be feedback.
Join audio.
Progress. I mean, if you want me to listen? Because I can hear you on Zoom, but we want to interrupt you. Okay, Lauren, on the- Unmute it? Okay, go ahead and speak and see if we can hear you.
Good morning, Jessica.
Can you hear that?
Yes.
Yeah, just trying to up my volume.
Okay, she's just raising her volume.
I'm so used to the mouse.
There you go.
Okay, hold it now for an-
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me?
We, we can, Shira. Thanks so much. Sorry about that. It's, I think the issue is on the Town Hall side here in the building.
No problem at all. I'm not a copy myself, so, just excuse me.
No, no problem. Thank you. Yeah, can you just explain the, the request, which we're familiar with, but for the record, we just need to, to have it?
So, this is my first year. I mean, I just went through it here on the job, so I'm learning as I go. And this year, I'm working closely with Andrew Karen on making sure we go through all the departments to get everything approved for our annual celebration from Habad of Greenwich. Our idea is to have the menorah where we usually put it on the corner of Arch and Greenwich Ave. And I'll be visiting the building department next week in order to walk everything through with them and make sure that we're set to go when everything's approved, as well as almost every other department in Greenwich, which is exciting for me, to get to know everybody. And then what we were thinking was that we know that usually during the celebration, there are kids and people walking back and forth across the street. And it was easier last year to kind of block it off a little bit for safety. So, we were interested in officially closing that one block. We, we wrote up until alligators, but really it's up until, I think it's called Bowling. Bowling Street? Sorry, I just, I don't have it in front of me right now. Just to officially close it off, just for safety, just because it's dark and a little bit, you know? It's just dark at that time. So, that was our proposal for that, just with safety in mind.
Okay, thank you. So, it would just be from Bowling Place. It's, it's just not very long, right to the, to the intersection?
It's just that, yeah, it's, it's not the whole block. It's basically like half of the block, that block.
And how, usually it's a few hours, but how many? Do you have a specific number?
I didn't hear your question.
How many hours are you requesting that for?
It's on your phone. One second. Well, we wanted to do it, so-
Oh, four to six?
We would start, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, three, three to six?
We would just ask for a little, the event will be starting at 4:00, 4:30. We're just confirming. We might not even need that much time. It's just better to ask for a little more initially. But we just need to set up, set up a couple of folding chairs there. So, it might not even be for that long, really like half an hour before the event starts.
Yeah, I remember last year, I think the request was a little bit longer, only because of, I guess there was a parade. But yeah, that's fine. So, I think what we'll do is wait until you get all the approvals for, for the next meeting.
Right. Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Just one request that you don't, when we light the menorah, that we don't go too high this year.
Too high?
Yes.
Okay, I'll, I'll talk with the building department next week, and we'll-
Now, tell a, tell a rabbi that.
I, I did have a question about the plan. Oh.
I can hear you.
Great. Thank you, Shira. I did attend last year. It was wonderful. I agree that it would be much safer to have a road closure. I very briefly looked at the plan before this meeting, and it did say that there were going to be 50 folding chairs in, in the street itself. And I just, I just wondered about that, if there was any, any possibility that, that those seats could be off of the road. That, that's my only question.
What we were thinking was if that part of the road was closed, then maybe in order to avoid any older people or people with little babies having a hard time, that we could just put a little bit of chair sections in so that they can have a seat.
I'm, yeah, I'm just wondering, is there, is there any place where the ceremony's going to be held, if, if you could do it off the street?
I'm so sorry. There's an echo, so it's hard to understand the question. Is there a way that the person I tried to listen to just get the question?
I'll leave the audio to repeat the question, and then I'll put her back on. So, don't talk at the same time as her.
Yeah, we just, we're kind of rigged together with St. and Hailing today because of some other issues, and I don't know where else. I have the numbers. I just have experience with this before.
If everybody else-
She should be able to, she should be able to talk now without the echo.
Okay.
All right, let me find the audio again.
Okay, can I go ahead and ask my question? All right. My, so, Shira, my question was simply if those folding chairs, if there's any area, you know, proximate to the menorah that the folding chairs could be set up that weren't in the street itself?
Can we just follow up?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll def, we'll follow.
We'll just follow up. I think everybody else heard me, so-
I'll just follow up with Shira. She, I think she's the only person who did not hear me.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Shira. And we'll see you in two weeks with all the approvals. Looking forward to it.
Going on to the next item under new business, the amendments to traffic ordinance are 15, for 15-minute and two-hour metered parking at Amherjone Crossway Parking Lot. And we have DC Gray here.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning. For the record, I guess I'll just introduce myself. I'm Deputy Chief Craig Gray of the Greenwich Police Department and the Director of Parking Services. You have the proposal before you for a change of the ordinance. I'll give you some background and information on it. Yeah, if you would, could you just pass out, it's a, it's a survey that we did in advance, but I, I would just briefly tell you. So, we have, as you're aware, there's a lot of problems on Greenwich Avenue with a lack of spaces. We've received, over the years, I should say, a lot of complaints from the area of the post office about a lack of short-term parking. Noting that, as well as the proximity of that parking lot, and particularly to Greenwich Avenue and Amherjone, we thought there was an opportunity to put in place a, a pilot program, you know, limited in scope and time, to just see how changing of the utilization might affect the traffic flow. And so, what we did is, we changed the lot directly in front of the post office, which is owned by the town of Greenwich, and not owned by the, the post office, and went from a long-term parking, 12 hours, to a 15-minute, with the idea that, you know, current utilization by people in Greenwich, there's an opportunity there where a brief in and out would be beneficial. And particularly, what we found is that, the truth is, is that people don't improperly park for extended periods of time. It's usually for a brief moment. It's because I'm going to take the risk of going into this store for five or 10 minutes, get my goods, wares, or whatever it is, and leave. And so, twofold for the study was to see if we could satisfy the, those customers in the area going into the post office, and also eliminate or reduce the amount of improper parking that was taking place in that area. And so, as I said, we've received a lot of complaints about parking at the fire hydrants there, the crosswalks there, double parkers in that area. So, if you look at the, that study in front of you there, if you go to like, well, we'll just say, go to, to keep it brief, go to page number four. And so, one of the things that we did is to ensure that the panel was ready for this, is that we conducted a survey of information from the citizens. And, you know, we've stayed on top of it. We've discussed it with the local merchants, how they feel the parking enforcement supervisor routinely just checked in and anecdotally asked, "How's this lot working for you?" We put together a survey, Luanne and I put together a survey. And if you look at the survey, there was a couple of different ways in which we did it. Number one, if you just take a peek up here, if you look at me over here, we put together this flyer, and we put it in the area, we put them on the cars, and it was kind of, I shouldn't say kind of. So, this was two ways, all right? One, you could log into the website, you know, Town of Greenwich, login, type in, and communicate your results there. We also used a QR code. And so, I would just say, you know, in a public forum, I'd like to really thank the IT Department for assisting us with the QR code. We find that, you know, and particularly Uber drivers and, you know, those type of delivery persons are very quick to use a QR code. And so, opportunities to get their input for the usage was used with the QR code. I personally asked, you know, one patron of the post office if she could just, you know, log in, and she had it done in three minutes. We also provided those, Amherjone, we had a hard copy survey that we also put out there. So, those that are not perhaps computer savvy, smartphone savvy, had an opportunity to just simply use the paper format. And so, if you look at it again on page four, if you go to page four, so we had 273 Greenwich residents login to give their opinions. Total respondents, right, we see most were from Greenwich, not all, but most were from Greenwich, all right? If you'll note, again, as we said, it was really just for the entire area, not necessarily just for the post office. But so, if you go to page five there, you'll see that, you know, most started with the United States Postal Service, but others used on different businesses, right? And so, restaurants business, the post office as well as the business. They had a UPS in restaurant as well. I, I can tell you that it was used greater than the number of respondents in the survey. And we found that there were a lot of people. I spoke to a gentleman who definitely didn't do the survey. He wasn't interested. But he did explain to me that he used one of the, I believe, he used one of the local merchants on the avenue, and that he had no intention of using the post office, but there was some spaces available. And so, in the end, you know, we, we found that it was productive, that it worked, all right? And then if you go to page six, right, 86% of the people that used the lot told us that it was useful to them. The 14 that said no, I, you know, I think they said no because it wasn't an exact and perfect solution for them. You know, many complained or made mention that, "I needed more time," or "I had to wait in the post office for a longer length of time." And so, I think it met their needs in some way, but not 100%. From the survey that we received, no one said like, "No, turn it back to the way it was previously." It was just some nuances, perhaps, would have suited their needs better. I also discussed this with our staff, you know, from a staffing perspective, the PEOs. I wrote some of their comments down. Our parking enforcement officers have a very difficult job out there. And I would just, again, on the record, just say that it is filled with conflict. No one is ever happy about being asked to move the vehicle, right? Told to move the vehicle. It, it is a very difficult job. And nobody's ever happy. Even the person that complains about the improper parking, sometimes they'll come back and go, "Why did you tell my customer to leave?" And so, it, it becomes very challenging that even the person that is calling in complaining about the parking still doesn't really want you to, to enforce it. So, here's some of the notes that I got from them, all right? The PEOs found that managing and enforcement in a lot is no different than managing any other lot. So, it didn't create any undue burden on the staff that's managing the lot. The location of that short-term spot has reduced the number of illegally parked cars on the upper portion of Greenwich Avenue, especially during lunchtime. They anecdotally noticed that the effort that they made to come down the avenue, to keep traffic flowing, is less now since we opened up that short-term lot. The message started to get out. People realize that there's an opportunity to park nearby, and they are instinctively shifting in that direction. Again, the program has reduced the number of negative interactions with the public. The lot's location off the avenue but near the avenue has given them a viable option to point people in a direction. So, rather than just move along, "I don't know what to tell you. Keep looking for a spot. You can't stop here. Do not double park." Those reactions, those actions have stopped, at least at the top of the avenue, where they say, "Listen, we have a short-term parking. All you have to do is go on Amherjone. It's right over there. 15 minutes. Don't double park." And it's viable. And so, those persons now have a viable spot to go to, park the car, come back, and hopefully have a positive experience as they continue their day. They also noted that there was a wide variety of people using the lot. It wasn't, it really was not just those using the, the post office. There's a lot of people using it for different reasons. There's a lot of people using it for different reasons. My parking enforcement supervisor noted that, you know, even some of the short-term delivery, the mid-size delivery vans have used that spot. You know, getting product to some of these shops on the avenue that do not have a loading dock in the back rely on coming through the front door with some of their products, and, you know, it may not be the large vehicle, but even the smaller ones. She noted that more than a few times, she's seen these smaller, I'll call them mid-sized delivery vans, making quick deliveries from that location. So, which brings me to the conclusion, that this is really, you know, as a pilot program, it's not a huge change. It was very limited in scope, very limited in location, but it definitely improved, right, 1% improvement, kaizen, the parking situation in that area right there. And so, I see no reason why we couldn't permanently convert it from its current configuration of long-term to short-term. In the proposal, as you see, we have split it into 15-minute parking and two-hour parking. We don't know what the right number was, but again, the physical configuration of that lot has 15 spaces plus a handicap, which also was just recently restripped. And we will, once we change the way in which we actually manage it, we're going to put meters inside there, we'll pick up one more additional space. And so, I'm hoping that that is going to be the right balance of, no longer long-term, but the two-hour parking, all right, for people, for an opportunity there, as well as the 15-minute parking, short-term.
I want to, can't thank you enough. We've gotten some feedback, I have, very positive, and how quickly you responded, because there were some people that reached out before you did this about that lot, and very, very happy. So, also want to thank Luanne and the team at Parking Services, as well as IT with the QR code. But I, it's a great, to me, it's a really nice balance, because one of the things we're finding as we try to add parking wherever and whenever we can, is that the hardest thing is the short-term, because there's some people, lots of us like to walk, but there are some people who can't walk, and they need to be close by just for a few minutes. And so, this is really, really huge, and, you know, maybe at some point, we can look to other areas down the avenue, but this is a great start, and can't thank you enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
I do have a question, but I'm going to echo and say, "Thank you so much." This is really welcome, and thank you for the survey. My question gets at to this balance between 15-minute and two-hour parking, and I'm wondering, during the pilot program, were there violations of the 15-minute parking? Or, and then my follow-up question is, were there a lot of empty spaces because people needed more than 15-minute parking?
Yes. Yes, there were many violations. People didn't pay, people ran in. Part of the survey, people were like, "I don't want to pay for parking, 15 minutes, I just..." Yeah, there was all of that. And the parking enforcement officers really just exercised the discretion. You know, in the end, we're trying to manage a scarce resource for the town of Greenwich. We're not looking to, you know, write fines, right? And so, we recognize how difficult it is to park out there. We did not use a heavy hand. We followed a routine patrol pattern for enforcement. You know, we did not target that area to ensure that the numbers came up, we just managed it. And so, yes, there were people that did not pay. If they, if the parking enforcement officers came through, they ticketed those. So, all of that occurred there as well as every other place. The 15 minutes, you know, you know, trying to follow the ordinance, right, I shouldn't say trying to follow, following the ordinance, 15-minute existed, all right, and so we used 15 minutes as the pilot program. I personally think that 15 minutes is a little bit hurried, as the first selectman said. You know, people can use that spot for other things, and 15 minutes puts you on a real hustle. You know, personally, I think 30 minutes is probably a little bit more reasonable, give you an opportunity, because people can walk up one place, turn out that they're not going to get in quite as fast as they thought, without having to worry about getting a ticket, you know, coming back. And from a management standpoint, for the PEOs, you know, 15 minutes becomes a kind of a grind, all right? Unless we're going to increase staffing to do this 15-minute coming over and over and over again, you know, some other places may lack the enforcement, because we're spending too much time responding back over and over again to a 15. So, if we increase it to, again, anecdotally, I don't have everything in front of me, but, you know, 30-minute, in the ordinance is, there are 30-minute parking spaces, they're not paid spots, but there is 30, and so perhaps in the future, maybe, you know, the parking services will come back with another proposal to maybe include a few more parking options that would address the hurried feeling of 15 minutes.
That's my thought, it's, yeah. 30 minutes might be more reasonable.
There's no, how about 25?
Well, my question got at, though, is that an option? And you're saying it's...
I'm sorry, I believe it is an option, but it's going to have to come before the board, and it's going to be at another date and time.
Okay.
So, I wanted to also thank everyone, and I agree with Fred, I think there's other opportunities to change the timing, especially in the lower portions. In the lower portion, do you hear me now? I don't want to, like, kiss this thing.
Don't do that.
Do the best we can. I'm not a yeller, I'm not a yeller.
I can hear you, ma'am.
You know what, the mic's not on, maybe I can borrow Fred's.
Okay, sorry, is this better? Yeah, my mic wasn't on. So, I think there's opportunity at the lower part of Greenwich Avenue, and maybe if it is the 30-minute, I think I've mentioned before, when we've come and raised prices, that I had an idea of starting earlier than 9:00 a.m., because a lot of times, at the bottom of the avenue, and that's the quick, go to Starbucks, go to CFCC, you know, those are the quick ones, and a lot of times, at 8:00 a.m., like, every parking spot is full. So, I think that that's an opportunity for the future, maybe the time that you're enforcing or collecting, as well as maybe 30 minutes at the bottom.
I agree. I have, and I've discussed it briefly, I think, but I have a, I'll say, an outline of a plan to address it, and this was really kind of a pilot program that helped us solidify, you know, can it make a difference to the flow of traffic on the avenue and the way in which... I can't create spaces on Greenwich Avenue, right? There's 417 spaces, have been there for the last 100 years, but maybe it's time again to discuss the actual number of hours, utilization, and how people are using them. And short-term parking is a challenge.
Well, thank you. I think we're hearing that you're certainly, you certainly would consider changing, amending to a 30-minute. I think you're hearing from us that we would be open to that, so at another time and date, maybe we could discuss that and vote on that, too. So, but I think this is great. It's a first read, obviously, I don't think it's time-sensitive, but I think you'd see we're all in favor of this, but we'll give the public two weeks to weigh in, and then we'll come back and vote for it. But I think this is a really, it's great progress downtown, so thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Luanne. And Lauren's right, we have to get this fixed. It says it's on, and it's not on, so... Thank you. And last on the list of new business items is the Pullman and Comley, Pullman and Comley request for a conflict waiver, and we have Town Attorney Barbara Schellenberg here.
Good morning.
The super lawyer.
Can everybody hear me? Okay. So, the town is looking to engage Stephen Cowherd of Pullman and Comley to assist with the, to provide legal assistance in connection with a proposed long-term lease arrangement involving Nathaniel Witherall. And the reason that the firm is asking for a conflict waiver is because Pullman and Comley currently represents seven plaintiffs in tax appeals involving the town, and additionally represents plaintiffs in one zoning appeal involving the town zoning board of appeals. I don't see an issue in providing a conflict waiver for this, because these matters, the tax appeals and the zoning appeals are completely unrelated to the type of work that Attorney Cowherd would be doing for the town. The firm has agreed to establish a procedure to make sure that any attorney or other firm professional working on those unrelated matters would not have access to the file involving the Nathaniel Witherall matter. So, you know, again, I don't see any issue in providing that conflict waiver, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Barbara. No, I don't see any, you know, reason not to. Yes, because this, I think, is pretty clear, but I'll open up to questions or comments.
You did say, though, that this is not time-sensitive.
You did say that this is not time-sensitive, though, so if we could have a second read, I didn't have any item materials prior to the meeting.
If you want, I can ask Attorney Cowherd to provide a list of the specific cases, because, as I said, there are a total of eight. So, if that would be helpful in making the decision, I'm happy to do that, and you could take a vote then at your next meeting, if that's the preferred course of conduct.
I would have that. Thank you very much for accommodating that.
Sure. Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you. No, thank you, I would support that, too. So, I appreciate that, and we'll see you in two weeks.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, Barbara. One second. We have one more item, but we're going to take a minute or two break until someone comes here, and then we'll sign off. To fill time, you have any complaints, Ken?
I have a complaint, Barbara didn't tell me in advance, I'm complaining to party.
What?
I'm complaining to party for Barbara.
Maybe we'll get to one, maybe.
Do I have to? Do you have any complaints, Mr. Schellenberg?
I have lots of complaints, but I don't complain, though.
No one listens?
No one listens, no.
When you complain, you remain.
I like that. Who said that?
Somebody, but I enjoy it.
It's your quote now.
It's my quote now.
Yeah, just to cover yourself, saying the old saying, and this way, they say you're not...
We're having a little get-together of the laws department today, because Fred Arracko is last day, so...
Fred, Fred is a good guy.
Oh, somebody's raising their hand.
Wait a second. Get back on this room. It's Peter Alexander.
Oh.
No, not right now.
No.
Peter Alexander has his hand raised, but we're, Peter, if you could hear me...
Just allow him to talk.
Yeah, because we're going to be going to, making a presentation in a minute, so I know you wanted to say something. I saw Peter this morning. Good morning, Peter. Can you unmute? Did he leave?
Peter, you need to unmute for us to hear you. He's on here twice now with his hand raised. You need to unmute.
Oh, we'll ask him to unmute. He's unmuted. Okay, so, I don't know if this is going to be possible.
Do you want me to just, we only have like a minute or two, but do you want me to just call him and have him speak into my phone?
Yeah, I think maybe if Fred just calls you and speak into the phone, like, you can call him and speak to him on the phone in the meeting, because we are having audio issues because of the setup. Oh, actually, it's, actually, Peter, it's because you're logged on twice, so you have... Oh, wait, number one is my phone, so, yeah, okay, never mind.
Okay, yeah, because you're holding up the meeting. Okay, we're in the cone room.
Come in now.
Okay, please, Peter, please mute yourself online, and then you can just speak directly to Fred on his phone, so please do.
Hello, all, this is Tecky Times.
Peter, you have the floor, how are you?
I can't believe we're, yes, Peter Alexander, long-term resident of Greenwich. I just wanted to say how serious I am about trying to reach a agreement of mutual indemnification as to soil, water, and air testing for the town as an independent source. And I want to tell you how serious I am taking this. I moved my office to 777 Putnam Avenue, unfortunately, the site of gullivers, but also a perfect location, because it, I can concentrate, since I have no windows in the office, but along the western border is a small channel that's blocked and causes flooding in Emberwick, and just to the south is where the huge bridge complex is coming in.
So, you're, so, okay, so, thank you, Peter. So, you're requesting that of the town, and Attorney Schellenberg, did you understand his question, his comment? Peter, if you can do me a favor, us a favor, you could just email it to me today, and I will forward it to Attorney Schellenberg, and also, we'll put Megan Demato on there, too, to take a look at it, and we'll get the answer to you today.
Yeah, that'd be fine. I have to say, I did forward it to the RTM, so I'll send the same thing. I would really make this as simple as possible. I love the town, and I don't, and I also understand that I make mistakes occasionally, so I want to see if you can pay me a dollar and get me in mutual indemnification. That's it.
Okay, I appreciate that, Peter, and we'll, I'll look for the email today and get it over there. Thank you, Peter, have a good day.
Okay. Is Fred not coming up?
Yeah.
Oh.
Hi, Fred.
Okay, so we have one more item, and we wanted to wait for Freddie to come in here. We have a proclamation for you, Fred. We want to thank you for your many years of service to the town. I know you've been here, you've lived here a long time, and I know you love the town very, very much, and you've done a great job, and everybody loves you, but we also know that, we're also happy that you want to go to the next phase of your life and enjoy things, and go into Yankee games, but hopefully not playoff games, because we don't excel there, unfortunately. But I will...
But I will read the proclamation for. Whereas Fernando F. Durango, affectionately known as Fred, was born on the island nation of Cuba on February 3, 1952. And whereas Fred immigrated to the United States in 1960 to escape communist tyranny and settled in the Town of Greenwich and made it his adopted hometown. And whereas Fred was educated at St. Mary's Grammar School, right over here, and graduated from Fairfield Prep School, Fred earned his undergraduate degree in 1974 from Holy Cross College, and his Juris Doctorate from Georgetown School of Law in 1977. And whereas Fred went on to have a distinguished tenure at a prominent Greenwich law firm and joined the town on January 4, 1993, as an assistant town attorney. And whereas Fred went on to have a successful career in the town attorney's office defending the interests of the town in all manner and type of complex litigation matters. And whereas, after 29 years with the town, Fred has decided to retire in order to devote his energies to travel, attending Yankee games, Yankee home games, maybe some away games, but no playoff games, and spending more time with his wonderful children, Deanna and Sandy, and his beautiful grandchildren. Now therefore, I, Fred Camillo, Fred Camillo, the first selectman of the Town of Greenwich, do hereby proclaim October 27, 2022, as Fernando F. Durango Day in the Town of Greenwich, and urge all our residents to join me in celebrating and in recognizing Fred's contributions to our town, and in wishing him well in his retirement and all future endeavors. Fred, thanks so much, and good luck to you.
Fred, why don't you present it to him standing here, so we can do a photo?
Yeah. Totally unexpected, but much appreciated, and I do everyone like him, and we should ask my assistant, Shaw, in the next few years, how she feels. I enjoyed working for the town. Oh, sorry.
We can't, no one online can.
I'll take it easy, sorry.
Would you mind getting a picture?
Speak up, Fred.
We'd all love to.
Thank you again for this totally unexpected, and much appreciated. I got a friend. Thank you again for this totally unexpected, but much appreciated honor and recognition. I mean, I love working for the town, I love the Town of Greenwich, and, I got it, yeah. All right. Well, I hope the Yankees win. And, am I on? Oh, thank you again for this totally unexpected recognition, very much appreciate it. I love working for the town, it's a great town to work for, it's a great town to have grown up in, and I'm very appreciative. Thank you. Hey. And thank you, everybody. Is there, I don't, is working, okay, okay, thank you. Seeing no other public comment, any board, any appointments?
No, not today.
Okay, seeing, with nothing there, is there a motion to adjourn?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo, is a yes?
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Okay. We are all done. Yes, okay, thank you so much, Jenny, and Barb, and Barbara, and Ken, thank you.